Planning a zoning meeting for July 12th, or July 14th, 2010. Village of Westmont. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Acting Chairman Anton?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet? Chairman Richard? We have a quorum. Two absent.
Would you all please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I got you guys up. If you're going to speak in front of us, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Great, okay, thanks. Please silence all your cell phones, too, if you would. All right. Okay, start off with approval of the minutes for June 9th, planning zoning.
Move that the minutes be adopted as printed?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fadesco. Colerole on that?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Anton?
Staying.
Staying, we weren't here, okay. Okay, let's get on to the new business. Planning zoning 10-016, Raymond and Catherine Sedoma regarding the property located at 324 North Richmond Avenue for the following: A zoning code variance request to permit a construction of addition which will encroach on the required front yard setback. The proposed front yard setback measures approximately 16 feet. Code requires a front yard setback of 35 feet. Are they here? Come on up and sign in and... Yeah, can you explain like your hardship and why you're going that direction? And it's kind of, I read your brief. That was pretty good. If you want to go over that and use it as an outline, kind of explain it to the audience, what you're asking for.
In the past four years, we've watched three of our parents die at age 80, around that age. They raised parents, lived in a house just like ours is, with stairs up and down and no bathroom or bedroom on the main floor. And as they got older, it was, it just cramped their style. They didn't have any way to really live. And the last year of his life, Ray's father actually had a bedroom in the living room, which took all the, I mean, the younger brother had nowhere to entertain or anything like that. We have a daughter who's 26, 25, and we don't want something like that to happen to her with the cost of extended care and nursing homes and things like that. We watched my mother's savings get eaten away. If she hadn't been fortunate enough to have a benefit package through Bell Labs, we wouldn't have had any help with the nursing home either. And we're just trying to think ahead. Neither one of us want to end up in a nursing home. And our house, the way it is now, is not a way we, I mean, we couldn't live in it because there's no, we come in the front door, there's a living room, a dining room, and a kitchen, and that's it on that floor. So on the north end of our house, if we extended the roof line from the living room and the dining room to add a bedroom and a bathroom and a small utility area for laundry, we wouldn't have to go downstairs at all to live there. And we'd also have enough room for our daughter to feel like she had a place to entertain in what is now our family room. And also, we'd have a place where if we needed to hire help for personal care to live in with us, we could do that because we'd still have room upstairs. So that's basically the reason for doing it. The 15-foot setback variation, I'm not sure how big a bedroom that's going to give us, but it's, it'll be big enough to deal with as we get older. We won't, I mean, we're not trying to put a TV room in there or anything like that. We just want a place to sleep. The other thing is, the way our driveway is now, it's a circle-through drive from Naperville Road to Richmond. The Richmond side is a double-wide drive. The Naperville Road is single. And because we're on a corner, in the wintertime, even with the snow blower, doing that driveway is terrible for Ray. The snow blows back in the corner, it fills up in the corner, and you have to shovel it by hand to get it out of the corner. And then, once you start snow blowing around that big bend, everything blows back at you anyway. So we were hoping that with a setback variance, we could move the garage opening, which doesn't change any setback things, move the garage opening to the east side, and that would allow us to shorten the length of the driveway and put grass in that big expanse of what is now blacktop. It's pretty ugly-looking, actually. I mean, it is, it's in bad shape, and we didn't want to do anything with it if we could change it. To do anything in the front, well, it's kind of confusing because I just read in the briefs that the closest side to the street was considered the front. So we've always thought of Naperville Road as our side yard and Richmond as our front yard. If we were to do something on the Richmond side in that corner, we have three roof lines that we'd have to deal with. And that would make it out of our price range, let's put it that way.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody in the public who would speak on this? Okay, public comments closed. On the staff, have you have anything on this? Chad?
I don't have anything specific. The request was pretty straightforward. I just wanted to commend the applicants for, in addition to addressing the snow and the blowing issue, they're significantly reducing their lot coverage by eliminating the horseshoe driveway and changing up the access. So that's good, especially in this neighborhood because I think there have been some...
Yeah, there's a lot of water problems.
... flooding concerns.
Okay. All right, thanks, Shannon. Can we start off with Commissioner Thomas?
I agree with, this is straightforward. You have a problem, you're going to deal with it, or potential problem. And I don't, I don't see anything wrong with the setback variance because your house next to you, going west, I believe, has something projecting out there also. I don't exactly know how much, but it's more than, and it's not going to be, you're not going to be sticking out. So I don't have a problem with this at all. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Pill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, that was a nice presentation, and I like the thought process you have. I certainly hope that you won't find it necessary to use it for a long time, but it's really smart to be thinking ahead like that, and I like the whole concept. I think you've done the best job you can with trying to solve a potential future problem. The one question I had, it was a little difficult to tell from the drawings, but where the addition is going to go, you show four trees that are existing, and there's two of them that are very similar. They look like twins. You probably know which two I'm talking about.
Yeah, they're very tall.
How, this shows you not coming really close to them, but it almost seems like, do you know how many feet you'll be from those trees? Those trees won't have to come down, will they?
I don't think so. They're on village property, so it wouldn't be. I mean, we had, Mr. Yader came out and looked at them, and he had the trees trimmed of all the dead wood and everything like that. So supposedly, they're in good shape now. And I don't think with the addition coming out, it might be close. That's one reason, we didn't plan a lot of windows on that side. It might be close in terms of privacy, but I don't think it's going to damage the trees or that the trees would need to be removed. I can't answer your question exactly in feet, because at that point, I'm not sure. It's like 35, I think.
Because the drawing shows the extension going halfway, basically, from the existing home to the tree.
Yeah.
But yet, when you think about it in terms of how many feet, it almost seems like it has to be going further. I was hoping it wasn't going to go all the way up to the trees.
No.
Because that would have it pretty close to the road, then.
No, no, no. If I'm not mistaken on that, the survey of plot at that point, the... From the, from the east corner that would be extended, it says 3816. I'm looking at the one with the drawing of the addition.
Yes, so, okay, that's a diagonal line there.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that if, somewhere around 20 feet, because if we take 15-foot out or 16-foot out...
So the drawing is fairly accurate, then?
Yes.
Okay. It was hard to tell because they didn't have precise measurements on that exact part, and I wasn't out there actually measuring it. I was just sort of standing there looking at it. Great. Well, I think it's a good plan, and like I said, I wish you luck with it. I certainly support it, and I hope you don't really need to use it for some time.
Thank you, me too.
Commissioner Fadesco, please.
Yeah. In looking at the lot and looking at the side that you're going to extend out on, it makes sense that that, to me, I would have thought that's the side yard.
Yeah.
Because you have a Richmond address, you know, your garage is on that side, even though you have a circular drive right now, but you're going to change that, and it'll be an entrance to the east. And to me, it makes sense to do it where you want to make it. And I think it's a great idea, and it really didn't look to me like it was going to be an encroachment, that much of an encroachment. And that's something we should look at in our zoning code as far as corner lots, because I remember, we've seen a number of different types of things that have come in front of us, and when I was on the village board, the same thing on the village board, where people with corner lots have unique circumstances. They're not the same as a mid-block situation. So because you have two sides that actually are on streets, you know, you can't really, you know, sometimes you're looking at it, and the house faces the, what you think is the front, and it's not, you know? So constantly, we have people coming in here looking for variances, and it really should be kind of a staff decision if we could modify the ordinance. I'm not sure if that's something that we should be looking at.
Shannon, doesn't the ordinance say that on a corner lot, you can select like a 25-foot setback?
I believe that's true in some circumstances.
Yeah, but I don't believe that's in all circumstances.
Right.
And that just kind of...
Some allowance made for...
So anyways, I...
We were very surprised at how little of our yard was really ours. I mean, because it's at a rear...
Yeah, and there's no real sidewalks out there either, so it kind of makes your yard look a lot larger than it is on the plot. Anyways, I think it's a good idea, and I echo Mr. Pill's comments, you know, that I hope you don't need it for a long time, but it is great to think about the future, you know? My mother lives in a, in a house that has stairs going to a basement, but doesn't have, she does have the first level bedroom, which is kind of a nice, nice thing to have, you know? Think without that, it'd be really a nightmare, and I applaud you for thinking ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I too have a corner lot, and so you do have two front yards, two requirements, and so it does, it does kind of bind you, but I went and I looked at it, it is going to be pretty close to the, to the street, but with the trees and so on that you have there, hopefully, that'll continue to give some privacy to you. But I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Okay, I also have a problem with it. I lived in a corner lot for 13 years, and people run through. I had a Jeep drive-through in the wintertime, I mean, just crazy stuff, but I can feel for you on that, so it is like having a lot of front yards. And I think it's a good use, I think it's reasonable. I don't have any problems with it at all. So I hope, again, like the other commissioners, you don't have to have that issue come up too fast, and I wish you guys good health and your whole family good health.
Okay, we have zoning variance requests. Those are findings, fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Any expansion of the existing single-family house is severely limited by this lot's double-street frontage and substandard lot depth of 105 feet. Expansion into the interior side yard is impossible due to the limited space available and the presence of a 10-foot utility easement. Expansion into the rear yard is not possible due to the limited space available. Expansion to either the front yard or the corner front yard when necessitated variance, given the setback requirements and the small size of this lot. Without this variance, the house could not expand to accommodate the applicant's health and age issues, and the applicants could not yield a reasonable return on their property.
Agree with this, please raise your hand. Are you unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number two, applied to the owner is due to unique circumstances. There is sufficient hardship for this request based on the front yard and corner yard setbacks of the lot in conjunction with the small overall lot size.
Agree with that, please raise your hand. Are you unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed single-story expansion is reasonable in size at 16 feet by 26 feet and will match the character of the existing house and the character of the neighborhood. The applicant will remove a portion of the existing driveway to provide additional green space, and lot coverage requirements are being met. Accordingly, this proposed expansion will not alter the essential character of the area.
Agree with this, please raise your hand. Are you unanimous in decision? For PZ 10-016, zoning code variance request to permit construction of an addition which will encroach on the required front yard setback. The proposed front yard setback measures approximately 16 feet. Code requires setback of 35 feet. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by, motion by Greg.
Go ahead, you can say that before you get to comments. I want to talk about that.
Okay. The motion was by Commissioner Pill, second was by Commissioner Fadesco.
No, Dan Buren.
Oh, Dan Buren, sorry.
We may have a member of the public who was a late arrival who may wish to speak. That's at the discretion of the chairman typically.
Sure.
Or the entire commission. Did you want to speak on the first item? She should be sworn in.
Yes, please come up to the, come up to the stand, sign in.
Okay. Do you want us to stay? What do you need me to do?
You raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Of course, yes.
Please sign in, and then you can speak on the issue.
Thank you.
I have no objections.
Okay.
So you can speak on.
We live just a couple of houses down, and we just needed to understand how that was going to go on the lot. We are concerned that there's going to be blockages at that corner with visibility and so on, because my understanding is it's going to come out quite a ways. Could somebody clarify that for us?
Yeah, we can show you the site plan, and also, as far as visibility goes, the village does require that a line of sight triangle be maintained at all intersections so that there's clear visibility for cars coming both ways, and this development presumably does meet any, that was looked at by staff, and it does meet that requirement.
We have little people on bikes in the household, so we want to be real aware of how it's going to flow.
It's pretty far away from the corner. The corner is at a cute angle up there.
Thank you. And so the existing house?
This is the existing house?
Yes.
You can look on the television screen as well.
Okay, we're on Richmond, sure.
See how far away the corner is?
And so the house is going to go to the front on Naperville?
This is the proposed addition in front on Naperville.
That's what we think of as the front, but this, the addition would be on the Naperville Road.
So it would not be at all coming this way?
No.
We were under the impression it might be coming this way. Looks good. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So where are we at? We at roll call?
Comments from Commissioner Fadesco.
Anybody have any further comments for Commissioner?
No.
Okay. Clerk, can we have a roll?
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes.
Okay, you're past us now, so we'll go in front of the committee as a whole, and go up to them, and you should be, should be in good shape. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on. The next one is PZ 10-018. Dan Olson of Great Signs and Matthew P. Fuller of Fuller's Car Wash regarding the property located at 417 West Ogden Avenue, Westmont, Illinois, for the following: A, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs from three to seven; B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of ground signage to approximately 98.8 square feet. Code permits 71 square feet. C, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of all signage to approximately 336.3 square feet. Code permits 142 square feet. Sir?
Good evening. My name's Dan Olson with Great Sign Company. Matt Fuller is out of town tonight, but Mr. Ben Fuller is here with me as well. Fuller's has been in business in Westmont since 1996 as a full-service car wash, and with the current economic environment, you know, they are not just at this wash, but at a couple others, they've been adapting to the environment and going from a full-service wash to an express wash. So right now, they closed down on June 21st, and they're in the middle of about 100, or, excuse me, $850,000 renovation in order to upgrade the equipment in a way that they will be able to reach a broader customer base. In doing that, the big change to the property, in addition to the equipment, would be the two canopies that are being, are already erected on-site. One is a full-service bay where drivers stay in the car, they come out, they would pull up to that one, and then they would have their inside of the car cleaned and dried by an employee. The second is 110-foot canopy, which will be for self-service only for the customers. The three things really that we're looking for are pertaining, in addition to the freestanding sign, what you see on the screen is everything as it is today that's been permitted. The free vacuum portion is what we're proposing to add to that, just to emphasize the fact that if they come to get a wash, that there is free vacuums for them, you know, self-service vacuums to be used. And that section of the addition on the freestanding sign is 14 square feet. Second issue signage would be the, this is the drawings I believe you all have, the car wash letters are existing. The proposed change to that would be to put up the $3 in an illuminated can, which could be changed as the market might dictate from time to time. This is the way the signage appears today on the top. We're actually reducing the overall size of the signage by about four square feet, the Fullers being larger in width and a little taller than what the change that they'd like to make there is. And the last issue of signage that we're looking for is, again, the addition to the vacuum canopy, the larger one, which is 102 feet long by 10 feet deep and 3 feet high, to install one sign on the north end of the canopy of that. And then they're going to paint it with a stripe pattern for balance and have two only west face of that canopy.
Is there anybody from the public that would comment on this? Come on up, sign in.
I'm from Birch Point. The condos that are right behind your car wash, your car wash there, those bays that you've put up, is there going to be, is it going to be a 24-hour thing? And are there going to be lights on all the time, 24 hours, or during the night?
There's only going to be a, should I?
Come on up, please.
There's a second microphone as well.
Do you want me to sign in, too?
Sure, please. I mean, come and get you later.
All right. No, they won't be illuminated all, for 24 hours. The hours of operation are going to be from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
And then after the hours, there will be only a very, there will only be one light on each canopy acting as a security light to be illuminated after hours.
There is a light right now, I think, on the building, or there had been on the building then.
Okay.
Right, during the night.
Yeah, and those are going to, there might be maybe one or two, it might be one pole light or two pole lights that might be illuminated also for security reasons, but other than that, everything else will be shut off.
Seven to nine.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That water, where is it going to be draining? Right now, it's been draining onto the back of our garages, and I know that you put a wall up there, and I see it drain, and it's coming down into our blacktop. We've had a problem with people getting water in their garages from in the back, and I know that our management company has talked to you about that a number of times.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. My brother might have been the one that they spoke with. I wasn't aware of that discussion, but I know that as far as the elevation is concerned on that back portion, we are, you know, we're up to our allowed setback on that back portion back there, but we have not changed the elevation for the drainage of the water at all. The water is still this, but those are, but those are just tubing that's underneath the, I'm trying to use the proper wordage for it, it's a retaining wall, and it's a brick retaining wall, and those are just...
Seepage.
Yeah, for seepage. But there's actually going to be concrete over the top of the, over that existing area, so how much seepage actually will come out?
Should dry up eventually, I would assume, if you're not going to let water in now with the concrete on top, so...
Yeah.
Hopefully, it'll get better.
Yeah.
All right, well, the concern is that pipe there, you know, that's coming through that retaining wall, those fancy...
Well, if there's any way we could work it out, like, I mean, I'd be glad to try to put in some, maybe some tiling to try to move it to drain the water towards the drain system that's there. We'd be glad to work with that in any way. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Can we start with Commissioner Fadesco?
Does the staff want to make comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I've always cut the staff off.
Fred can correct me if I'm wrong with this, but in response to the neighbors' question, I believe that the general drainage law would prohibit the water from going from your property to theirs, so that is something that will need to be addressed.
And this even goes beyond general drainage law, which is the natural flow of stormwater. This is water that they've brought on-site that they use for their business, so it's business water, which they'd have to retain and dispose of in a proper manner, not onto a neighbor's property. I don't know if the problem is business use, you know, for the car wash water, or if it's stormwater that's collecting under the retaining wall. Either way, I guess they can look into it.
And then, just generally speaking, in reviewing the requests for the three variances before the commission this evening, staff did feel that the requests were somewhat excessive, given that the total area permitted is 142 square feet with three signs, because this is three non-consolidated lots, and the requested amount is approximately 340 feet. feet, which is a surplus of about 139 percent. There were some options laid out to try to reduce the amount of variance that's being requested. For example, eliminating the free vacuum sign and using the existing message board to try to convey the same information, to try to use some temporary signage to convey the change in operations to customers that pass by. Though there may be a slight reduction in some of the signs, the overall increase is significant. And the one elevation that has the, the two main canopy signs and the one further, I believe, to the east, there are, there is a little bit of room to possibly try to consolidate some of that or eliminate some of that to bring the amount of variance closer in line with what code would allow. And staff does recommend trying to accommodate that.
It's probably generous treating this as three separate lots-
Correct.
-when calculating the allowable sign square footage, because although it's three separate lots that they've chosen not to consolidate, we're treating it as one lot for zoning purposes. It's got a single business, single primary building on it. If, if we were to treat it as such, I imagine it would be even a smaller square footage that's allowed.
That is correct. Code allows one sign per lot when it's not a corner lot, and that was a more generous interpretation to state that you could have three in this case because it hasn't been consolidated.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because I don't, I'm not really showing it. It's the first time I contacted staff when we were trying, trying to get plans together. I was told that we had, well, they're permitted signage, but they're non-conforming. If we touch them, we have to comply with the ordinance, but the ordinance hadn't changed, which left me wondering how we got issued permits to begin with. But my point is, the, the three lot issue, which gives you three signs, doesn't give you any more signage at all, because this old ordinance only allows for one sign per business, per lot, with nothing allowed for freestanding signage, which most ordinances have a separate portion, the code, for freestanding signs, for wall signs, probably directional signage, temporary signage. And Westmont's ordinance, from what I understand, has nothing. It's just two square feet per foot of building frontage. And it's also a hardship for them, because they have 71-foot of building facing Ogden, but about 40 or 50 percent more, because the building is north-south elongated. But the three, allowed three signs really, I don't understand how it could be considered to be extra due to interpretation, because the square footage is still what it is, which isn't for a lot that size. It's not a lot of signage, combining building, combining freestanding sign. And now, with what they're doing in the business with the canopy, it's very important that they, that they have the signage on the canopy. It's 110 feet long. They're investing $850,000 to make it during this recession. And I don't, I think we're, the, the car wash, the express, or the, excuse me, the, the free vac sign on the, on the freestanding sign is only 14 square feet. Staff recommends that we remove it from the plan. It's only 14 square feet. And the signs existing that are permitted are going to get smaller. But what they really are going to need, and they, they've used them, and it's been vital in Aurora and in Bedford Park, is the canopy signage. And those canopies didn't exist before. It's a big addition to the property and a big part, you know, of what they're doing during the renovation.
If I could comment on that?
Sure.
The code does provide those options, that, that choice is that it could be a ground sign or a wall sign up to that certain amount of area. Yes, it may be somewhat limiting in that it's one per lot, but there are some options. There's also an exemption in the code for directional signage that you aren't even required to show, pull a permit on, basically. You can have up to 10 square feet of directional signage, which includes a small logo, so that that could be another alternative that would be presented on the awnings to, say, entrance, exit, vacuums, you know, whatever it is to get the customers in the right location. Yes, granted, it's smaller than what you're looking for, but it is sort of a middle ground, where I think that the comment regarding the number of signs is just the fact that there are three variances here, and there's an opportunity to possibly, to possibly have eliminated one if we hadn't viewed that flexibly.
Sir, you, you understand that by considering this three lots, we're actually erring in favor of the applicant by allowing three signs as the minimum rather than one sign?
I guess I do, yes, sir.
We're, we're trying to-
The number thing kind of threw me, because originally, in my mind, we're really only asking for, considering it's, it's three lots and that we're asking for three additional signs. We have three signs now. And with the addition of the, the vacuum canopy, we're asking to place one on the end and two on the west elevation, which is six signs, not seven. Staff reports a seven. I'm bad with math. I always say I flunked algebra twice. But I, I, I do understand that. I guess when I mentioned whether it was good or bad, it's just that in terms of square footage, it doesn't allow them anymore. It is what it is.
Anything else, Shannon?
No, unless there are questions.
Okay, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the, the existing building, the previously existing building, where you're changing it from Fuller's to $3 car wash. Now, the two elevations currently exist, right? The one on the side, on the, on the west side and the one on the north side, correct?
Correct, identical.
Okay. So, you already have one on the west side. Is that blocked whatsoever by the canopy?
Yes, it is.
It is blocked by the canopy?
Yep.
Well, my comment is, A, if it's blocked by the canopy, why do you need it? If you're going to need one on the west side, put it on the canopy, remove that sign, put it on the canopy, use the square footage on the canopy. I don't have a problem in putting two on the canopy if that one is removed. And definitely don't have a problem with the replacing Fuller's with the $3. The other thing is that 10, that 10-foot canopy in the back, where, you know, you really need that back there. You know, that, that one's 24 square feet approximately. I just can't see it. You know, that would reduce some of the signage. And as far as the free vacuums, I'm not really against that one, because I have seen other, you know, car washes that do this. You know, I drive up and down Ogden Avenue, and I, I know for a fact there's one out in Naperville on the north side of the road. I don't know if there's another one between here and there. There may be, but I'm not sure. And I have seen a few. There's another one over in Villa Park that I've seen, and they do prominently display the, the free vacuum. And I know that's your competition. And, and it does catch your eye, and I think that's something that's necessary. But having, you know, all of these signs, I don't think is necessary. I think reduction is in order.
We did several months ago when I met, we met Fuller and we were looking at the plans. And at that time, we stood in the parking lot, and we said, here's what we want to do on the road sign, that's what I'd like to do on the, on the wall signs. And we thought, well, is the canopy going to block it? Well, you look at a site plan, it's hard to get real time. You stand back and you visualize where it is. Today's the first time I've seen a canopy in place. To answer why keep the sign or ask for it, it's there. It's, gonna have to repair the wall if he takes it down. All he's gonna do is take the Fuller's down and put a three. If it's only seen from within, you know, if it's blocked from Ogden Avenue. But I think now that the canopy's in place, it, you know, if it was something that, you know, would help get support for, you know, canopy signage is the most important thing, that west sign would be blocked.
And that's, that was my thought, you know, that it's going to be blocked. I saw the canopy going up, but I wasn't quite sure what you guys were doing over there. But, you know, now that I think about it, I'm thinking, you know, it's really, the canopy is where you want the signs, and the building is not exactly necessary. And I understand you may have to do some, some work on that, and it may cost you some dollars, but at least it gets a lot, lot closer to the, the ordinance. And yes, you know, as far as getting a variance by this commission and then the village board.
The canopy's, you know, really, the, the locations where, where this has been done, canopy is so elongated-
Right.
And by putting the stripe design on there and signage, in Aurora, they, you know, they actually, I felt they wanted us to put more signage than what we wanted originally.
Well, I understand it's such a long, at 102 feet, yeah, I think that you-
My point, it balances it out.
Two, two, just kind of looks natural. One is, you know, it's okay, but I, I think the two might look a little bit better. But then, if you give up the one in the back, I mean, you know, it, it's kind of almost superfluous, you know, the one in the back.
By back, you mean the north elevation?
Uh, it would be the, it would be on the west side, the southmost sign. Or is that-
On the west elevation?
Yeah, the west elevation. Am I looking at this wrong? No, yeah.
Well, balance is just, I guess, the key, because it's 110 feet. Aurora, they, they actually put-
Says in Aurora, though.
It says Aurora, by the way, yeah.
Well, for balance.
I'm talking about the little sign, the small, the smaller sign, the-
The 10-footer on the, on the, on the bottom of the page.
It's seven foot by, 7.5 by 3.6 is what it really is, you know, that's, that's the sign I'm talking about, where it just almost seems extra, you know. Two, two on that side makes sense. Unless I'm looking at that wrong, and that's the front part of this, is that maybe, maybe I'm looking at this wrong. Maybe, is that 90 degrees to the, the side? Look at the lower, the lower, the lower sign. And on your drawing, it's on the far right bottom?
Yes.
Yes. Am I looking at this-
That's the nor, that north end.
Okay, so that would be the, that would be the, that would be facing Ogden Avenue. Well, you already have one prominent sign on the actual existing building's car wash on that side, so I'm not so sure you really need that one there. I was looking at it incorrectly. But the two, the, the canopy on the side, where you're going to definitely have people coming down Ogden Avenue in such a wide open space, you'll be able to see those two. It'll catch your eye. Plus, you have the, the large sign at the front of the property, which you'll be able to, to recognize it. I mean, people know you're there. I mean, they can't miss the place. It really is obvious it's a car wash. And what you're trying to get across is that this is a new generation car wash, this is the new $3 self-serve, and we still have the full serve, you know? Commissioner Fidesco?
Which, which one of these signs are you talking about that he-
The one, your finger's right in front of that one, right there, that one. That's, I guess now, I, I read this wrong. That's actually on the north end. That's, that's facing Ogden Avenue. The other two, the 102-foot part, that's actually facing the-
West.
The west, which is going to be the eye clinic.
So, those aren't, those aren't in line then?
They're not in line.
I had trouble with that also.
Yeah, so I got confused, so I'm glad we got that clarified.
I think I understand. I apologize for that, that because we have it on the right side rather than the left, we're not orientated correctly.
Well, I mean, it's really-
They're also not linear. They're, they're at right angles, correct?
Right angles.
The small one on the right is on the front, the narrowest side of the canopy.
The north end of the canopy, which runs north-south.
Yeah, it just-
So, you have a west face of the canopy, the 102 feet, you have it facing west, parallel with the building, which is-
Right.
Yeah, the way, the way it's written, it says north end, north end of-
On Rosen's side.
Yeah.
The eye doctor.
Correct.
I was just confused, because it says the same thing on both sides of the paper. And I just, you know, saw the large, long canopy, and I assumed that it was part of that, just a little offset in, you know.
I apologize for the notes here.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I understand now, and I still kind of, same thought. Have one large sign on the front of the building, which is on the existing building. You may not need that canopy sign, or I don't feel, feel it's necessary. And then, the one that's being obstructed by the canopy, that may, maybe needs to come down. If you add those total square footage up, you know, that would reduce it somewhat, and it, you know, better opportunity to pass, at least in my mind. That's my comments.
Okay. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I've been on the commission for quite a while, and we, I don't recall 139 percent request over the allotted signage. And I personally feel that, as Commissioner Fidesco said, that you'll have a difficult time getting that kind of variance passed both this board and then to the, to the village board. I, I think Commissioner Fidesco's suggestions are, are good. Also, there's one that was made in, that the free vacuum can also be put on the moving sign, signage, and you'd still get the, get your message out, right? What it, whatever that was called.
Correct.
But I, I personally am not, will not vote for a variance to the extent that you are asking here.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, please.
I, I agree also. I, I think you have much better shot getting with staff, again, now that you understand what, and everybody understands what the drawings look like, or what the drawing, drawings mean, what the, what the requirements are, three, three lots, one lot. You, you need to speak to staff before you go before a vote, because I, I don't, I don't see you being successful asking for what you're asking for at the present time. Sorry.
Commissioner Pill?
I, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners, too. I think that this is a, an excessive request at this particular time. And I'm as sympathetic as anybody to the economy and to the state of your business, and I appreciate the investment that you're making, both in your business and in the community. However, I believe that there have been a couple of workable solutions here that would bring this down. Just the elimination of the, the one above the existing, on the existing building on the side, which is going to be blocked by the two canopies, that takes you from 139 percent to 100 percent roughly. And while still a large amount, it at least starts to bring it somewhere closer. While I don't have the tenure that some of the commissioners have on the, on the commission, I've, we've never had one like this. And, and, you know, and before you run and compare it to Aurora, there's other towns we can compare to on the other side. And we could be sitting here looking at Oakbrook's ordinance, where we'd be cutting down the big sign in half and bringing it down to six feet or so above the ground, and we're not asking you to do that. I think that some of this signage was put in at a time when there was either less regulation or perhaps it came through, I don't know the history of it, but perhaps it came through in a grandfathering. Because in driving up and down the Westmont portion of Ogden Avenue, it certainly seems like we would have, you would have the most signage by far of any business, in fact, more than several businesses combined. And while I agree that the economic conditions have been tough, and I agree you're making a, a substantial investment, I believe we're going to hear very similar investment stories, in fact, even larger amounts of money from some of our remaining applicants today. And they're not coming before us asking for these type of sign variances and things like that. So, I, I don't have a problem with the way you're wording it. I don't have a problem with your colors. I don't have a problem with the look and the feel. You guys present a uniform picture, and I like that amongst your businesses. It helps brand your image and things like that. What I have a problem with is the sheer magnitude of this request. And I think there have to be a couple of ways that you can take a look at this. And I think we've heard a couple of them. I think Commissioner Fidesco was right on track with that. Thank you.
Okay. Again, and I have to concur with my fellow commissioners, it's going to be the same way, I think, when you go up to the board above. There would, otherwise, there'd be lots of signs on the, on the, on Ogden that would show up, you know, huge. You guys have a big sign. I think you should keep that free vacuum. When it's the first thing that caught my eye and could get me in there right away. But you need to, yeah, you need to do a little horse trading there. It's, it's excessive. If it was 50 percent, I mean, I'd, I'd fight for that. And we, like you said, we, like Commissioner Pill said, we've got dealerships right now in construction that come in front of us again. And if we set a precedent with you guys at 140 percent, we're going to lose control of the thing, and that's not the image we want on Ogden and in the town. So, I would, I would suggest, yeah, that you would table this or- you would table this or, you know, reconvene with staff and get it to a position that could get through. Because if you want, if you, we could take a vote if you'd like, but.
One of the concerns, and Fred or Shannon speak up, if I'm misstating this, or the applicant can, I know they are anxious to get reopened. They wanted to get in front of this commission tonight, and they're being expedited in front of the village board tomorrow night, which is rare to do. But staff did so to try and accommodate this successful business in town. So one option, it's up to the applicant, because the applicant certainly can rework their plans and come back in a month. The other option is you can vote on the plans as presented, which sounds like it may be a negative recommendation. However, you can do a secondary motion to suggest what would be acceptable to you, on lines of what Commissioner Fidesco stated. And then the applicant has the option of proceeding with their plans as they are and a negative recommendation, or perhaps saying that they would reduce the signage in, in line with the commission's motion. I don't know if the applicant has a, a preference.
Just so that we understand, and it, time is critical here, that they're on a timeline here with getting contractors and everything. Appreciate everything anyone said and, and recommendations and little give and take. The west wall sign, if that were to be, your, your board would recommend, a recommendation with conditions, is that what we're saying? If, to remove the west wall sign and eliminate the north elevation?
I don't know. I think a north elevation, I think we could recant on that, because that faces Ogden. That's, that's, that's imperative, I think, for people to see that. Maybe get rid of something down the line, further down, what's already on your property, down on, on the second one here, on the 102 footer. That's where, that's way in the property. I don't think that, if you wanted, if you wanted to change something, my recommendation would be to get rid of one of those and then leave everything else as is. Because you want your presentation towards Ogden, right? Do you want everybody to see that? So this, this one that's down the line here, if that's what, if I'm reading that correctly, if that's going towards the, that'd be going towards the south on that canopy, maybe get rid of that one. Now you're down with the one on the wall on that one. Now I think you're really in, you're.
Thought question, the one on the north side is more effective. It's 102-foot canopy for balance. I apologize for bringing up other work. It's just that we've done these canopies before, and it, it looks like a piece of, like a pencil on a drawing. How do you find balance for it?
Yeah, I guess you're right. I guess I would look a little odd with having a blank on that side, but.
Well, we have the stripe design, too, which, so now what do we do? We move it all the way to the center and away from, and to pick your poison? And, and it, the design and balance does play into it.
And I think the vacuum thing has to stay. That's pretty good. I mean, that's a, it's a sales point, and I don't know. You guys?
Well, as I, as I indicated before, if, if the numbers, and I'm just going by the math that we've been provided here at 139%, if the, if the one sign comes down, the existing west wall sign, that drops it down to just under 105%. And if you're correct, and I, I don't know that you're not, but if you're correct in the existing north wall sign, where you're switching Fuller's to $3, and there's a reduction there of a little bit, that's going to round it down just a little bit to 100%. That's still, still a relatively large. I mean, one way to view this a little bit is that you have an existing building, and the two canopies are, while they're not really existing buildings, they do provide additional frontage then. Because those canopies won't be linked, right? They're two freestanding canopies.
Yes, sir.
I've watched them going up. Just a personal question. Are you still going to have the full-service car washes there, or is it only going to be the $3?
No, we'll still have full-service.
So you're just bringing another option in?
Exactly. It, the only thing that I'd like to say is the staff report, I just got it yesterday, and I read it, and I was kind of surprised the way it was worded. The numbers sound like it's a lot. The ordinance is the reason that those numbers exist, is because there's no allowance for canopy signage. And it is Westmont's current code. There's no allowance for just freestanding signage in the code. There's no separate allowance for wall signage. It's just two square foot per foot of frontage. And that's the, the reality of the matter. But that is where, how we get to the point that it seems like it's a huge amount of signage. We have three displays. We're adding 14 square foot to one, asking to add 14 square foot and making the other two smaller, or eliminating one. The bulk of it is all in that canopy, which is, it's, it's, that's what they're doing. That is the, the business right there. The free vacuum service, and there, there's nothing in your ordinance for canopy signage, like maybe for a gas station that puts logos and, and different things on canopies. They're still allowed today what they were 1996, which is two square feet times the frontage of the building.
And we recently had a gas station come before us, and we allowed an expansion over the existing code. But it was in the, in the low double-digit percentages. I don't remember the exact number. And we've been flexible with that. I've just never had anybody coming before us for 139%, even with different kinds of, and there's, there, you're not the only canopy in the town. I will say that, two, two small points. One, I know you've repeated, I believe, four times, that the free vacuum is a 14-foot addition to the main sign. Now we have in writing here in our packet that it's 20 square feet. So I don't know which it is, whether it's 20 or 14. Small point, but it is six feet one way or the other. I was using the 20 square feet because that's the number we were provided.
The dimensions are on my drawing, and it's, it's 14 square feet.
That could just be an error in the number.
Okay. That, that would take it down even further then, and probably take it down into the, I'll do the math while someone else speaks in a minute, but I'm sure that would take it with the Fuller's leaving and the, the $3 going up there. And if you had the existing west wall sign gone, we're now into the 90 someplace percentage. We're certainly under 100% at that point. But I, by the way, I'm a customer. So I, I use your facility often. And, and I look at the big sign. I don't really, it's funny, when this package came out, I didn't really even notice your existing north and west wall signs. I look at, I look at your monument sign. That's got it all. First of all, you've got it landscaped, one of the prettiest landscaping jobs in town. And you should be commended for that. And number two, you've got a nice, easy-to-read, pertinent message board. It's not flashing up all kinds of BS. It's pertinent, it's to the point, and it works. I mean, I think you should play to your strengths. I know you want to label this thing everywhere, but next, are we going to paint the parking lot so that when the guy's drying his car off by hand or vacuuming, and he knows he's in Fuller's $3 car wash? How many times you got to tell him? I'm not sure that you need to tell him this many times. You've got one of the most attractive monument signs, and adding that free vacuums, that's, that's bold. That's bold. That's going to catch everybody way before they see the canopies. That's just my point.
Mr. Kimball?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to respectfully disagree with the gentleman's comment that we don't make any allowances for canopy signage. We do, but it's as a percentage of the total allowable square footage of signage. You know, the applicant can mix and match whatever combination thereof. If he wants to have 100% building signage, he can do that up to the maximum allowable square footage. If he wants it to be 100% canopy signage, the applicant can choose to do that. If they want it all on a monument sign, they can, they can choose to do that. What we're looking for here, and I, you know, sorry that Chairman Richard could not be here tonight, but we've heard him say at many other planning and zoning commission hearings that, you know, we're very proud of our community. We appreciate the fact that this is a good corporate citizen, but we don't want our portion of Ogden Avenue, and maybe some other communities will forgive me when I quote him, we don't want this to look like Roosevelt Road. We don't want it to be overpowered by commercial signage that gets to look a little bit more gaudy than tasteful. With the other upscale auto dealership signage that we have on Ogden Avenue, of which we're very proud, we'd like this to member, mimic the, what's the word I'm looking for here? Stature, shall we say?
Classy, yeah.
Yeah. We want classy signage, and we don't want to border over onto, if you'll excuse the term cheesy signage, which is too much, too overpowering to look like much of what you see on Roosevelt Road.
I agree.
We, we do agree that they need to advertise their business. We think that some allowance should be made over the existing allowable code-required amounts. And I think, I'm sure the commissioners who have been reasonable in the past would be willing to work with them on a, perhaps a more modest increase.
Fred or Shannon, may I ask a question, please? With the existing sign ordinance now, so we're measuring the linear dimension of the north end, in other words, the exit area. Do they then get to add to that by the width of each of the two canopies? Does that give them more frontage along there?
It does not. Those are really accessory structures, and the way that the code's written, it's, the, the width is based on the main structure, with the exception of, I think, corner lots, where you can use the longer frontage of the two. That's obviously not the case.
So they're not getting any credit for these new structures? You're getting nothing for signage account?
That's really what I meant. And I, I understand what the gentleman's saying, but nothing for just canopy signage allowance. How many businesses have 102-foot canopy on their lot? It's unique. And, and this is Westmont. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but a lot of communities do have ordinances that are more detailed, and have certain allowances for different scenarios, different needs. It's still 100, whatever, two times 74, or 71, it's still 142 square feet, whether you put it on the building, on the road sign, on the canopy, it's still 142 square feet. That's what I meant.
And I, a follow-up question to either Fred or Shannon, thank you for the first answer, would be, I understand the corner regulations are a little bit different, where you can choose your side. Now, while they're certainly not a corner, they are a corner lot in the Westmont zoning area. The property immediately to the west of them is Downers Grove. Does that function as a corner, or is a corner only defined by roadway right-of-way?
I believe the latter is the case.
Roadway.
I guess one other thought for the hardship is if the, it's the north facade that we're using for the calculation of the allowable square feet. If a building happens to have a very narrow facade facing the street, they're obviously limited in their signage. If a building happens to be elongated, they're allowed more signage. That's how the ordinance is set up. Not necessarily a fair result. So just because of how a building's situated on the lot could result in greater signage. So I think what you may want to do is look at what is the overall square footage of the signage on this property compared to some other properties in the area that may have a wider facade when we calculate overall square footage. We had a Walgreens up recently. They had a monument sign, they had a wall sign. They did ask for a variance. I forget what the percentage was. Probably a little wider than this building. Maybe that's at least some hardship for justifying more, as you guys have.
Well, I, I can see that. And just to speak for myself, I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of voting for this proposal in the affirmative. I don't think I would support it. And I'm certainly not here to tell the applicant what to do, or what suggestions to make. But I would be interested in, in, in possibly some support if you were to remove that existing west wall sign. That, and with the correction we've made from 20 square feet to 14, and then the small correction from Fuller's to $3, it brings it down. It's still rather large. And I think in consideration for some of the unique things that both you've brought up and that we've discussed, 99%, which is where it's at mathematically, is still pretty strong. And I'm not saying that the village board is going to support that. But it might be something that, at least myself, I don't speak for the other commissioners, might be willing to look at.
This is just a minor point of clarification, but in the table included in the staff report, the existing north wall sign and west wall sign, the, the square footage actually is for the existing as modified, so.
So there wouldn't be a reduction there?
Not in, in that particular case.
But you could take, though, the 48.8 off if you drop the existing.
Right, right.
And you could change the 20 to a 16, which would get you down to, to 143 or 141.2.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the village attorney raises a good point, too. Maybe one other creative way to look at this is to say, let's assume that the linear footage on the north-south side of the building were the, the governing figure. So that, let's say that the building were rotated 90 degrees. That would allow them, what, 242 square feet of signage? And yet the request is for 336 square feet of signage. So, you know, maybe somewhere in the middle, there's a happy medium there.
Yeah, if you guys want to get this done, let's get this done. Decide what would, between us, let's get a, let's get a number. And we want to get you guys going. You're business in the town.
Appreciate that.
And let's, let's decide something here and, and not go running round and round.
I have a comment as well. If, if, if the canopy was not a canopy, but a building, a structure, how much more would it add to the frontage on Ogden?
I don't think it would.
I don't think it would either, because we'd still be looking at the primary building.
No, no, no. I'm just saying is, if they were to make that an additional building, say they built a building, not a canopy, you know, that amount of structure that's on Ogden Avenue, what would that be?
It's only 7.5 feet for each one of them, because I'm assuming that's going to go the way.
Okay, so it's basically 15 additional feet.
That's a sign cabinet. They're 10 feet deep each.
Okay, so 10, so 20 feet. So that really wouldn't give you that much more. I'd like the idea of, of looking at this as the, the building rotated the 90 degrees, and, and maybe that 240 some odd feet makes a lot more sense as a, as a number to use, to, to base the signage on. And maybe that's plausible.
You know, if you, if you look at it that way, and if you still reduce that existing west wall sign, which I think everybody agrees is going to be blocked anyway, it's going to be blocked by two canopies. That still leaves everything else that you've asked for intact, and then further reduces your percentage. If you figure it out that way, it's going to take it down into the under 40% range. And that's certainly much more acceptable and within the ranges that this commission has felt comfortable in working with applicants in the past. And again, I speak only for myself here. But I would be willing to propose an amendment, excuse me, a motion to that. If that were something that you were to ask us to do, I would support that.
To just eliminate, if everything stays as is, eliminate the west elevation wall sign?
That's correct.
I, I feel that that's what we'd like to ask for tonight.
Okay.
Do you have to have our attorney comment on, we would still probably need to vote on the first motion? Or can it just be amended?
No, I, I would just amend it. If, if they're going to change it on the fly, you can vote on item A as amended by the applicant. Just need a motion for that.
And does, does staff have anything further to say about that? How do, how do you guys feel about that?
We believe that's, that's an acceptable or discussable compromise.
I think there's some mitigating circumstances here with regard to, to all the things. I'm certainly not going to waste everyone's time in some high, some all, but everybody's had quite a few interesting and, and well, well-taken points.
Was there a consensus on the free vacuums sign?
Like that.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
I am, too.
I like that. I think it's a great marketing tool, and it really needs to be there. Just, just from my experience, reading these message boards, they don't catch your eye. And they're not, they're not something that will get your attention as a permanent sign. Driving down the highway, you know, driving down Ogden Avenue, it's a busy road. There's a lot going on, and you have a fraction of a second to, to, to catch a sign. And something like this, where it says free vacuum, that's going to catch your eye, and that'll stick in your mind. And you will be back, you know, because, hey, that guy had free vacuums.
Okay, so all the commissioners, make sure we're on the same page then, because we're going to have to go to the findings of fact and, and agree on that.
Okay, but when, when you do the findings of fact, they're all predicated on the original motion, so.
The only one that has a number in it, in the findings of fact, is the first one, where it says the number of signs from three to seven. And in this case, we'd be going three to six. And, and actually, that wouldn't be part of what Fred is reading.
And then I think on, on the third one, we'd have to change the square footage numbers based on the reduction of that west elevation.
Right, you're saying it's 242 now, or?
All I was saying is the square footage numbers are not written specifically into the findings of fact. So when you read them, it's going to be based on the amendment as agreed to by applicant.
Okay.
So everybody agree that fellow commissioners are okay with that? All right. Mr. Kimball, you want to take us, take off on number A, the zoning code variant?
Do we have a motion in a second on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Actually, what we typically do is the findings of fact first and then we take the motion in the second. Oh, you're saying, was there one on the floor already?
Yes.
No.
No.
There was, there was a proposed motion.
Okay, all right. So findings of fact?
Findings of fact, please. Fred for A, the zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs from three to six.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is changing its business model to a self-service car wash facility necessitating the additional signage in order to alert customers of this change and of the various car wash cleaning options. Applicant's success with this new business plan may be hampered without this additional signage.
Agree with this, please raise your hand. We do, unanimous?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Market conditions and competition, all beyond the applicant's control, have necessitated this change in the business plan and thus this request for a variance.
Agree with this, please raise your hand. We do, unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located on the heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue corridor and is competing for customers' attention with many other surrounding businesses and their respective signs. Granting this variance for additional signage will not alter the character of this heavily commercial area.
Agree, please raise your hand. We do, unanimous? Okay, so, Mr. Zomni, can we take, get a motion in a second on this?
Motion to approve planning and zoning item 10-018A as amended to allow the number of signs from three to six.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pill, second by Commissioner Thomas.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes right and Acting Chairman Anton.
Yes.
Okay, Fred, can we go to B?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is changing its business model to a self-service car wash facility necessitating the additional signage in order to alert customers of this change and of the various car wash cleaning operations. The applicant's success with this new business plan may be hampered without this additional signage.
Agree, please raise your hand. Unanimous?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Market conditions and competition, all beyond the applicant's control, have necessitated this change in the business plan and thus this request for a variance.
Agree, please raise your hand. All agreement?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located on the heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue corridor and is competing for customers' attention with many other surrounding businesses and their respective signs. Granting this variance for additional signage will not alter the character of this heavily commercial area.
Agree, raise your hand. Thank you, unanimous decision.
Okay. Just a quick note, this change, this request will not change.
Right. This one on B?
Yep. It's treated as is.
Okay, so I entertain a motion on B, his zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage signs of the ground signs to 98.8, co-permit 71 square feet.
Ted, you want a motion?
Motion, please.
Also moved. Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes and Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kimball, can we go to C, the variance request for the gross square footage of all signage?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is changing its business model to a self-service car wash facility necessitating the additional signage in order to alert customers of this change and of the various car wash cleaning options. Applicant's success with this new business plan may be hampered without this additional signage.
Agree with this, please raise your hand. We do, unanimous?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Market conditions and competition, all beyond the applicant's control, have necessitated this change in business plan and thus this request for a variance.
Agree, please raise your hand. Do, unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located on the heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue corridor and is competing for customers' attention with many other surrounding businesses and their respective signs. Granting this variance for additional signage will not alter the character of this heavily commercial area.
Agree, please raise your hand. We do, unanimous? Okay. So we have to change the square footage?
To 81.5.
Correct. So 281.5 is what we're asking for. Okay. I entertain a motion on C, the zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross sign square footage of all signage to approximately 281.5 square feet, co-permits 142.
So moved.
Second.
Before we vote, could we stipulate how we got to the, that number? By saying we used the long portion of the building?
Well, I think, Commissioner, we could explain that verbally in the report, the staff report to the village board.
As long as that's available for the board.
That will be a creative.
I think that was Mr. Kimball's idea anyway, so. All right. It was, the motion was by Commissioner Pill and seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Anton?
I vote yes.
Okay, so we survived it. You guys can get, go in front of the board and they'll be well aware of what we've done. And, you know, I like to get my trucks in your car, watch, but they're too big. So, maybe this sells everything, yeah, I'll be there then, so. So good luck and much success. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate all your input and your time. Are we still on for the tomorrow night, then?
Yes.
Everything? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving ahead. PZ 10019, M. God Hannah of Alpha Motors of Westmont LLC and Rebecca, and Rebecca Michaels with Prime Vista LLC regarding the property located at 301 to 311 East Ogden Avenue for the following, special use permit to request and allow sale of used automobiles.
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm just going to speak a little bit about our company, our mission, and then Rebecca will take over because all this legal stuff, I'm just work with numbers.
Okay.
So, our mother company called Prima Vista, and this company owns right now five companies. We work in the real estate business. We buy all the businesses, I mean, the buildings, office buildings, you know, real estate. We get, you know, the market now is bad and it's the best time to buy. And we have cash money because we sold our pharmaceutical company overseas and this was like paid in full, so all the, all the cash money we got, we want to reinvest it somewhere else. We have our management company, we have our IT solution company, and we have our aviation company, and finally, Alpha Motors of Westmont. Our idea of doing business is doing the business the right way. I am the CEO for the Prima Vista company and I came to this country in 1995 and I worked from the, I worked in a gas station, I worked everywhere. So basically, I know what's the, you know, everything going on, you know, with the employees, the employees with the salary like $12 an hour or something like this. And this is my main area of focusing now, like get, do something can help people who cannot get like very good job, just, you know, this $10 and $12 job make their life better. And another, I mean, the other two companies, the IT solution and aviation is just, you know, it's a big business and, and I love cars. That's why I started this. And I started a used car business because I know, and I have this 70% from the people who buys new cars because they afraid to buy a used car. And me personally was one of those, like, I don't know what's going to happen with the car if it's, I mean, no warranty. And that's what we're trying to change in Alpha Motors. I don't know if you drive down Ogden and you see the progress. We're trying to make this place in good shape. We buy like good inventory, reasonable prices. I'm not looking to be a multimillionaire guy with the, with this auto industry thing or the used car dealership. I just want to make the people who cannot afford to buy a new car and lose 20% just after signing the paperwork because it's new, that's depreciation, to just feel comfortable to go to a used car dealership and buy car. This, but we were doing this, I mean, our ads like everywhere now, we guaranteeing our cars for 30 days, pumper to pumper, like everything. And since we start to like sell cars, we sell the car, if anything goes wrong with the car because it's used, we fix it. They bring it back, give them loaner car, and we fix it. For some reason, we have two people like they were like not really convinced with the car, like, I'm not really, I just bought it because of the price or this is what the bank gonna, bank gonna approve me. We have this seven days exchange program, like, okay, get me the car, I'll, I'm not going to trade it in like everybody else, like, you're not going to lose any money. What you paid, I'm gonna pay you back towards another car. We working now on certifying all our cars. It's something new in the used car business. We gonna pay around $500 for each car to certify it, to make it to the standards of this warranty company before we sell the car. It's gonna take another couple weeks or so. That's, that's my intention to do this business. And I know my, I mean, Rebecca showed me the, this staff recommendation, and I know you don't want any used car in, I mean, in the area because of the bad reputation for the used car people. But it's a little bit different here. I'm not gonna like sacrifice the big company reputation for a small business. If you, our aviation company, we invested around $80 million in this company till now and we're going to invest more. So I'm not gonna ruin this investment or the whole company for, you know, little bit small investment for our company. So we do everything to our standard, like, I want to do everything right. Everything was bothering me on my previous purchasing used car experience, I'm trying to avoid now. That's what we trying to do. And it's amazing, it's just, it's been a month now, we opened, we start to sell cars while construction in late May, and we sold till now around 90 cars. That's for a reason because it's a good product. For some reason, people trust us, okay? Because the, most of the banks and the lending companies know our mother company, so we can finance almost everybody with this bad economy. And I, I mean, we got the business license, I followed the rules, like, we got the business license, we got everything, and then we got this notice that we need a special use permit. There was little bit issue with the sign and I, you know, I heard what's going on with the sign with Fuller's. And I said, okay, just let it go. I want to start work because now we hiring 25 people, I believe, and I want to hire more. I want to, you know, get more people to work. Actually, in two weeks, I'm buying two businesses, another businesses in Westmont. We bought another building in Ogden last month.
Autonation.
Autonation building. So my intention was to invest money in this investment. So, talking with the staff, I maybe little bit, I was little bit like surprised, I'm trying to work, I'm trying to make money, I'm trying, I mean, for the village. I, you know, I never heard about, nobody told me on our long process to get the license and everything about this special use permit. And, you know, I think it's something new. So, okay, I'm complying with this and we applied all the paperwork. And my intention to comply with whatever you want just to make this business start to run. Because to me, for the other four businesses, it takes like four months to set up the business and move on to the next business. And, but apparently what's going on now is like taking forever, so many small details. I'm not talking about the village, a part of it, but, you know, the whole thing is like so many details and it's very, it's very hard to like spend money, especially you don't take any loans or anything from anybody. And just watching this drainage for money, like, you know, every day you pay the utilities, of course, advertisement salaries because I promise the people who's going to work with me, like, because most of this car industry is just based on commission, so I promise them salary, full salary, every month till we look like a dealership, make money so they can live.
It's an interesting concept. I think it's, I think it's a pretty good idea, she can get used cars to be sold, get them to trust you. Are you, are you good then? Is that, are you?
Yeah, that's just introduction. I know she want to talk little bit about a recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, great.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Michaels. As Dr. Hannah mentioned, I'm the attorney for the parent company, Prima Vista, which is an investment company based in Willowbrook. And Alpha Motors of Westmont is a wholly owned subsidiary of Prima Vista, just to give you an idea of how the structure works. As Dr. Hannah mentioned, I think he did a pretty good job of just explaining the intentions of the company and what our purposes were, why we chose Westmont as opposed to any other village. We actually have had, as he had mentioned, we're interested in Westmont, we, we've invested in other areas along Ogden Avenue as well. So with that said.
I'm sorry to interrupt, by the way, this is the first, I mean, I came to Westmont when I came to this country in 1995, Carlisle Avenue from, guess, so, I mean, Westmont is just.
Your home.
Yeah, my home.
So with that said, thus far, up until this point, I first want to say that I really appreciate Shannon Malick's assistance when we first were advised that we were supposed to apply for the special use permit. She helped me a lot in, you know, just sort of looking at the logistics of it and trying to figure it out, putting it together. Thus far, we've put probably about $10 million into the village, into this one project in one month and created about 25 new jobs. So I think, again, Dr. Hannah has done a good job of just giving you the background of the company, and I'd like to just address the staff recommendations at this point. After reviewing the staff recommendations and discussing them with my client, obviously, I feel that most of them are extremely reasonable, the, there are two main staff recommendations that I would like to address. The first one has to do with the concern about the number of vehicles displayed on the property. When we originally submitted, when we originally created the site plan for the property, we did that in, we did that as part of the application process for the used vehicle dealership license through the state of Illinois. So we create, we created that, we had it commissioned by an architect for the actual construction work that we, that we're doing on the property. With that said, and again, we accept responsibility for that, the actual lot, I don't know if maybe we could put it up here, it might be easier. Mine has drawing, has markings all over it. Again, our property is kind of unique as well, it's similar to the Fuller, the Fuller Car Wash property in that our building is oriented north-south, and really bad at cardinal directions, but yeah, north-south.
Correct.
And so, the building, and it's also situated on three, three property, three, they have three different, three parcels. So the main lot, in which we, and which is also in compliance with the Illinois state regulations, the main lot that has, that we're gonna store the cars for sale, as you know, have to be completely separated apart from the customer parking. So the, the main sales lot is over here, is this parcel right here. When we originally drew in the stalls, we were doing it for purposes of showing that there's separation between the sales lot and the customer parking lot. And so you can see the stalls written on here. Currently, the 52, the recommendation that, that we be limited to 52 vehicles was based, I can understand, was based on the drawing that we submitted. I don't know logistically or procedurally how we would do this, but as Dr. Hannah mentioned, we've already in one month sold far in excess of 52 cars, and our intention is, in the future, to sell between 200 to 300 cars per month. So we feel that the 52 car limit might be a little bit restrictive for our business intentions, and what we would propose, what we propose is, actually currently what we have on the lot is, we have cars parked here. Actually, like, this is an island right here, and we have the cars parked on the other side here, and then cars parked up here. As you can see, this is actually an entrance off of Ogden Avenue, in the interest of safety, which, which we felt this was very dangerous to have two entrances off of Ogden Avenue for, for exiting and entering. We blocked off this entrance, and currently, and, and we have, we understand from the zoning ordinance that it should be blocked off by some other way other than vehicles, but we currently have it blocked off, and we have intentions to block it off maybe with a gate or something. This is the only entrance off of Ogden Avenue that is currently in use, and we've opened up this entrance here to sort of, for ease of flow into and out of the sales lot.
Which one now?
This, this entrance has been blocked off.
Yeah, and, and...
And this is the only one for...
Black Hawk. But where's, when they circulate, where they go?
Out of Black, oh, sorry, can't see it.
It's very dangerous to...
It's right here.
Left hand, this one.
It was off of the...
And Black Hawk.
Yeah.
It's, it's little bit dangerous for me to go left from our lot on Ogden, it's the rush hour, it's, so that's why...
So we've blocked off this one, this is the only one for entering and exiting off of Ogden, and then we've opened up this one on Black Hawk Drive. So with, with this being blocked off, we feel that it would be reasonable to add a couple of more, couple more stalls there, and along, since there are no cars entering here, along this edge here, and these. Also, in the back, the building is situated, let me see this. The building is situated here, and this back lot is completely hidden from view from Ogden Avenue. We do currently have some inventory back there, and we would propose that with this added space and the spots that I, I had just indicated, that we'd be allowed to park approximately 150 cars as opposed to 50, the 52 stalls that were drawn on here. I know that that's, I mean, this just came to our attention last night when we looked at the staff recommendations, and we'd be willing, whatever is required procedurally to amend that in our, in our submission to the board for the special use permit. Again, we have a similar situation where we, we really, we've actually postponed our grand opening, you know, in, in anticipation that we likely get the special use, we're hoping to get the special use permit, and time is of the essence for us as well. So that's the main, the main concern that we had with the staff recommendations. The other concern we had was that there was a suggestion that some landscaping may need to be restored. Generally speaking, we have no objection to doing whatever landscaping is required, however, it, the, the recommendation is vague in the sense that, I guess, we would just ask for more guidance along the lines of what, what the board would want us to do.
Let me explain something, I, I got my landscaping company, and of course, I, this is, I mean, if you check any of our properties, it's something different. But based on what they said, no, nobody did anything for this property for the last three years.
The grand, the landscaping was pretty bad when we took over.
So, he's doing his way of, like, killing the weeds, like, several applications, applying some, like, fertilizer or something, because the grass is, like, bad. All these bushes was like, like, wood from inside, so he told me we have to leave it a little bit, and then we're gonna trim it, otherwise it's gonna be just wood, because it's, it's just wood from inside, stuff like this. So probably he start to work on this today, and he's gonna finish this tomorrow, because, I mean, it's, it's time. I told him, I can't stand this landscaping like this, and it's, but he showed me, like, if we, beginning of summer, if we trim this bushes, the inside of the bushes, because nobody trimmed it for the last three years, so there was no light going inside the bushes, so it's just wood. If we trim this, it's gonna be wood, and so...
Okay.
Okay.
That's why, we put this, like, the nice trees to the east side. It's dying for something now, he's gonna change it. We work on it, but it's very, little bit slow process for, because of two reasons. I don't want him to, you know, work while the customers coming in and out, that's number one. Number two is, nobody maintained this property for the last three years, as he told me. Like, the other day, he tried to cut some trees in the back, because it looks, I didn't like it, not trees, big wood weeds or some, I mean, weeds been forever, you know, and there is, like, bees, you know, like, came out. He showed me where we wanna put the, the new trees, like, ants, I mean, a humongous number, he said, if we put any trees or anything now, it's gonna be...
But what, what you're saying though is you'll comply with whatever staff comes up with for landscaping.
Yeah, if it's an aesthetic, yeah, exactly, if it's an aesthetic thing, then we, yeah, we have no problem, we need more details, so, but...
Historically, it's been a maintenance issue, it hasn't been very well kept up in these years.
I think, so I think they agree, they agree with us on that.
Right, and as part of the submittal, the vehicles awaiting pickup were to be compliant with some screening, so it sounds like you're on the right track in terms of the...
Oh, and on that point, all of the vehicles that are, we don't have service on the property, so all the vehicles awaiting pickup, right now, our current system is, that's behind the building, it's fully obstructed from view from Ogden Avenue, so there's the, there's a pickup area behind there. The only other comment that I had with, with respect to the recommendations was that there was, oh, that the vehicles may not be displayed on racks. I'm not sure if this is just standard form language in, in terms of the recommendations that the, that the staff usually makes in regards to used car, used car dealerships, but we would respectfully request that we have the opportunity to display the cars on racks, that's a...
Yeah, let me interrupt here, we used to have a 13 racks on the, on the big lot, and I just get rid of this, all this, because it's, it's not...
So you've reduced them from 13 down to...
From six, 20 to seven now.
There, so, so we've done a significant reduction of the racks, but we would just ask that, as all the other vehicle, I mean, I don't know, it doesn't seem that we would have to, I haven't been told that we would have to ask for a variance for that, to be able to...
No, that would be a, just a special, you know, with any special use, the village can impose reasonable special conditions.
Yes, that's how it's listed here.
Safety, welfare, aesthetics, et cetera.
Right.
The list that staff compiled of special conditions here are conditions that have been imposed on every single auto dealer that has come in since 1998, at least since I've been here, whether they're new or used vehicles. So if you drive up and down Ogden, you won't see a single rack being used to elevate cars.
Oh, is that, oh, well, I was gonna say...
Chevy Wil K got huge, I was just looking at them now, like, I mean, very high Hilton Rex, Chevy Wil K, Lincoln.
We will, we will be discussing that with them then.
Okay, so that will...
It's not a small...
And the only exception would be if that one pre-existed, if their special use ordinance goes back far enough where, you know, pre-98, then perhaps they would be allowed to do that.
Well, for, then, for the, with, point well taken, and for the record, I would just like to, on the, you know, on the record, state that we would respectfully request that when the special use permit is issued, that we'd be allowed to, to use the rack, the seven racks that we have on the property. And then finally, just as, as a, let me just finish this one point, as a side point, we originally were submitting the special use permit with an application for a variance to allow for a third sign on the building. We've decided, as going through the process, to leave that off for now, due to the fact that we really, just like Dr. Hannah mentioned, wanna get up and running and start this business, and the special use permit right now is a priority to us, so that we can operate within the, within the code, within, within, in compliance with the Village of Westmont rules. And maybe eventually in the future, we'll ask for the special variance to put the sign on the building, but, but currently, we're, we're, we're gonna abstain from, from applying for that, for that variance. And then finally, my only comment is that I, I do have my own personal good experience in dealing with Alpha Motors, I was, I was the first customer.
She bought the second car.
I was the first.
Oh, the first, okay.
I was the first customer, and I also went into labor at Alpha Motors on May 12.
Not in the car.
Yeah, the idea is to make the experience a little bit, good experience, it's, I know...
Yeah, with the warranty policy and the seven day return policy, I think that they are trying to...
We finance, we finance everybody.
Change the name of used car dealerships, so...
I, so I'm, like, I got to each and every contract.
Excellent.
Personal guarantee, yeah.
So, it's, I mean, the car like broke, they cannot go to buy a $20,000 car with a 400 credit score, now we, we can sell them cars.
Okay, great. All right, is there any, are you guys done then, is that...
This is the site, the sign plan, but it shows the stalls, well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
No, no, it's okay, I didn't know if you were done or not.
I am done. I'm, I open to questions if there are any.
Okay, is there anyone in the pub?
Maybe see if staff has comments before public talks.
If we may, Mr. Chairman, just by way of introduction, previous case law precedent for many years had guided, which had guided planning and zoning principles with regard to special use permits, seemed to support the fact that special use permits went in perpetuity with the land. Upon receipt of this business license application, it was brought to our attention by Village Attorney John Zemanak that there is a recent case law precedent, which now casts doubt on that and indicates that if a special use permit for a particular use, for a particular property, has been vacant for a period of time, that the local municipality and regulatory entity may in fact have the right to, to require the new applicant to apply for a new special use permit. And as we said here, the idea is not to deny that special use permit, but rather to impose reasonable restrictions consistent with those that have been imposed on other auto dealers in the past seven or eight years, or in the foreseeable past. Mr. Zemanak, did you wanna comment a little bit on that case law precedent and why we're at this point, or...
No.
Okay?
He does not.
And then, I guess, just, just a question that I had with regard, Ms. Michaels, to the, the new layout plan that you're proposing, where would the customers and the employees of the business park, and how many spaces would be allocable or attributable?
That hasn't changed from our site plan. The customer parking is the same as the site plan, which is not showing on this one, but, but you know what, here's mine, it's a little messy, but it's okay. Yeah, so we, we did, we made some, actually, I don't know, Shannon, if you remember this, but we made some changes, the architect had made some changes with respect to the handicap spots to be in compliance with federal regulation, and so, I don't know if my memory serves me properly, but there's gonna be four handicap spots up here, and the customer parking are gonna be in stalls along the east portion of the building.
And how many customer spaces will there be, exclusive of the handicap spaces?
Exclusive, I believe eight, but the, the site pla...
Two sides, so it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
Okay.
Are those parallel to the building then, and what would the clearance be?
They are parallel to the building, and I believe that they were approved by, because we, we had to also get a special permit, we had to get a permit for the construction that we were doing, and I believe they were already approved by the village, as, as, that's why I'm not completely prepared to answer questions with regards to that, but...
And then employees, where would they park?
The, the employees are, do...
We park in the back.
In the back?
Behind.
Behind the building?
No, behind this...
Oh, there, oh, there's a, isn't this, there's like a little dumpster there, right? Yeah, and then there's, there's a separate section.
Me personally, I park there.
How many employees then would you have on staff at any one time at the...
In the morning, two, and three, and four salesperson, so what?
About, I, I, based on my experience, when I've been there, there have been about five or six people there.
Around seven, if I'm there. And bear in mind, they all drive loaner cars, so this loaner cars, we...
Are permitted to be parked with the, with the sales lot.
Yeah, we cannot park in the back, because it's, it's for sale. Just my car and office manager, Maria.
Oh, those are the only cars owned there.
And one of the secretaries.
So probably at any one time, three employee spots, and I think this space is sufficient to accommodate maybe 10, 10.
Okay, any more from staff? Shannon?
Just kinda generally, I think that there might be, what I can only term, a little bit of wiggle room in terms of the, the number of spaces, but they, they need to be clearly delineated, so if you do have the opportunity, maybe it's something that could be worked out before committee of the whole for striping. The primary concern is that historically, the previous tenants have just jammed as many cars as they could onto the property. There were previous approved site plans that, that designed it as an outdoor showroom with no more than 35 cars on display.
Right, okay, and that's point well taken, we'd be more than happy to do that, but we would request that we'd still be on track to, to be able to submit that within the two week period prior to presentation.
There's plenty of time to do that, absolutely. I guess staff would just be respectfully looking for a little bit of feedback from this commission in terms of the number it may be comfortable with. We also have to maintain reasonable drive aisles, and with two-way traffic, that's 24 feet, so I don't know what that dimension is, where you added the additional cars next to the island, but, but there are some requirements that have to be met for clearance and emergency vehicles.
And I forget, if I can interrupt, with the fire department, if I recall from them looking at previous auto dealer site plans, they were less concerned about getting into where the vehicle inventory is, as much as they were concerned with being able to get around the building. So the drive aisles, while I know we want a 24-foot width between, I guess bumpers, the turning radiuses may be less of an issue for, for the fire vehicles.
So you mean along this aisle right here and this aisle as well? Along the two sides of the building?
24 feet width is the requirement of code, correct?
If it's two directional traffic.
Okay.
Is, is it one directional road car?
It's one. Where, well, there's, there are never any cars parked along here, this is, this side of the building is always free. So the only part in question is the customer parking along this side of the building, and that is only one way, it's, it's actually just an alley, because it's blocked off here, it does, it's not continuous with the back lot.
The number.
Is it?
We removed, yeah.
Oh, you removed it? Okay, so it is continuous with the back lot.
Okay, all right, well, we wanna keep you guys going, so we're gonna, we might drop the number off the, off your, off your request, and then you can delineate everything, get it all together with... get it all together with staff.
Sure.
Before you go in front of the, this committee as a whole, you'll have it more locked down.
We appreciate that.
Okay, anything else from staff?
No.
Okay, is there any public comment from, okay, closed public comment. I'd like to go to Commissioner Thomas, please.
I'm confused here. You're saying time is of the essence, and that, and you want to get going, but you're already in business, aren't you?
Right, but we, we are putting off our grand opening, because, in, out of, I mean, essentially, the, the village was gracious enough to allow us to keep operating, and we're trying to, out of respect for the village, just keep our business operating low key, so that, and not even, you know, postponing our grand opening until the special use permit is, is issued. We appreciate that flexibility that the village did give us, but we want to just feel comfortable that we're operating under, you know, in compliance with the village ordinance. So that's all that I mean.
From my point, it's very hard to keep spending money, spending money.
And not know.
You don't know if you're gonna, you know, do something, or just you're gonna shut down and go do something else. I remember when I talked with Shannon, she's like, you know, it's on your own risk. I thought, yeah, I will, you know, I have to start, but it's very hard. It's very hard when you spend this much money every day, every day. And you don't know if you're still gonna be able to sell cars, or find another, anything else to do with the property, so.
I, I think if you get together, like you just said, about the parking spaces, and the other questions that staff has, I think, I think.
I'll contact the architect tomorrow morning.
Definitely point you in the right direction.
Okay.
And if you guys work together, you'll be in good shape before the committee of the whole.
Okay.
Commissioner Pell, please.
I have a few questions. Perhaps I misunderstood a few things. First, let's look at the handicap parking. The drawings I was provided say that handicap spot number one will be converted to a regular customer spot. That would then drop handicap from three to two, but I thought I just heard you say you were increasing it to four.
We are, because, that, that's a good question, actually, because that amendment was made by the architect in, at the village, after realizing that that wasn't in compliance with the federal regulations and the Village of Westmont regulations. And so, the original site plan that was submitted with, those changes occurred after the submission of the site plan in, for the, for the special use permit. And so, the amendment was made and initialed on a copy.
Was a field correction for the permit.
So it's.
Okay.
But I believe the village is in possession of the corrected, the corrected copy.
The spaces will be four.
Four, four spaces.
All right. Now, then, there was a mention that down the east side, there was going to be eight parallel parking spots. Now, on my sheet, they're numbered four, five, six, seven, eight, and there's a blank one. I'll assign that one number nine. So that would be only six spots. I don't see where there's eight. And then, I believe that someone commented that there was a matching eight on the west side, for a total of 16. Someone else said that there's no parking on the west side of the building, that it's always open. So, I'm counting six spots, and someone said there are 16 for public parking, or for customer parking, because I don't think everyone will be handicapped who comes to your business. So, which is it?
Okay, well, the, the, the comment about the, the alley being vacant with no cars was made by me, and it was in reference to the.
Yeah, west.
West side of the building.
Right.
This entire alley. So that part, I hope that clarifies that, that comment.
Does that mean, instead of 16, then, the, because the original comment was, there's eight on one side, and there's eight on the other side?
Eight here, and then eight parallel to it on the other side. But now, after speaking, after the village attorney spoke, that might not be in compliance with the 20, the.
Fire department.
Yeah, for the fire code. So, again, we, we would, I'd have to check with the architect to see.
Okay, so it's only gonna be on the east side?
Yes.
And then, according to this drawing, there's not eight, but there's six. There's four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So that may have been a misstatement on my part.
Yeah, because now they park eight.
It's six? There are eight?
Yeah.
They only need parking spaces for customers based, one space for every 600 feet of floor space of the building. It's not that big a building, so they may actually be providing more customer parking than what is needed by code. So there's no need for the customer parking on the far east side. Probably what you have along the building and the handicap spaces would suffice. The only concern, I think, the village has, because this has come up with other dealerships, is that you pack it full of inventory, there's no place for the employees to park, so they start parking on the streets, start encroaching into residential neighborhoods, start encroaching into other business parking, and it creates a problem.
Okay.
And so we would like, ideally, to see you mark.
Delineate where the.
Delineate employee parking on this, on the space for a reasonable number of employees.
Okay.
And this is including the loaner cars, I mean, the demo cars, their demo cars.
Well, we can explain that as part of our explanation.
Yeah, because what happened every day, when they come, the porter is like, lean it a little bit, and, you know, it's on display, because we want to sell this car. But a car like my car, it's my car, so I just, that's why, we have like, three cars every day, just, it's a, with a Illinois license plate, not a dealership license plate.
It's a demo.
I don't know.
I understand. I guess one option is if you show seven employee spaces, but they're filled with the dealer cars, they're there for display, because you're gonna have display in the back area, too.
No, I think his point is, those employees driving dealer cars would park in the sales lot.
Yeah, originally spot, you know what I mean? If it's parked in this area, they take it home, and then, when they come in the morning, just put it in its initial spot. That's.
That's typical.
Because it's, it's for sale.
And that was the next area I was gonna question, because I understood in the rear area, you're using that for additional storage of new cars. That's a part of the area that's allocated towards the expansion from 52 to 150 new car, or new used car vehicles.
Sales.
What I didn't understand, and I understood the three demo cars for yourself and two other key employees, what I didn't understand is, because if we've hired 25 employees, where all those cars are going?
Well, some of those, I, I mentioned the 25 employees as, as a point of job creation, but a lot of those employees are based at our Willowbrook office. They're like, human resources and personnel and things like that.
Okay, so they're outside, and I'm sure there's also shifts and stuff. Nobody's there all the time.
Bike, I mean.
But if there's seven people there, let's say.
Right.
And three of these cars are going, for lack of a better term, because it says it on here, where the, where it's marked trash enclosure.
Mm-hmm.
Behind it, I guess, to the south of that, where are the other four going? Because you don't want to mix them on the lots. There's not room for them there, and they can't go in with the public.
Okay, here is the, here is the employee parking facing this way, and there is alley here, okay? And then the cars like, park.
The sales cars.
Yeah, sales cars, I mean, cars for sale. And there is alley here, and another row.
And all of this, we will clearly delineate on the new site plan that we'll submit.
Yeah, this is very difficult for us to approve and look at this, because it's really in flux. This is quite different than what we're talking about, okay?
Okay.
So you're gonna squeeze that in there somewhere in the back, and you can co-mingle those cars? That's okay?
Yeah, I, I think as long as they show, for example, four, or whatever you and the board think are reasonable, four employee parking spaces, or five, let's say five, well, four or five, and show back there where, how many inventory spaces they're going to get. They don't have to be 10 by 20-foot parking spaces, you know? It could be smaller, because they're not for customers, but.
Okay.
As long as the village has a number, and it's somewhat, you know, aesthetically reasonable.
All right. And then, I guess my final comment was, I, I didn't understand how you could come close to 150, and I, I'm sure I'm never gonna understand that unless I see the drawing at some point, that you have the architect, because that's basically threefold the 52 indicated spots, and that would be, for each spot we see, there'd be three now.
Well, correct. And again, I just want to give this disclaimer, that I came up with that number based on just roughly sketching the lines in where, where the cars are now. And I have to talk to the architect to see if even 150 is, is possible. But what I did was, I just, I did corresponding spaces for these.
Yes.
And I put corresponding, I put spaces along here, and along here, just estimating the spaces based on this drawing. But I think your question will be more accurately addressed when we submit, because everything's gonna have to be in compliance with the code, and with the fire, the fire code as well.
Based what, what's happening now, for some reason, I think he did measure this wrong.
He might have measured them too wide, I think, too.
Because, yeah, we have a decent space to open the door, so we don't do any dents to the other car.
Sure, sure.
Okay? And here, there is.
There are more cars than stalls here.
Yeah, more car than what's, what's on this drawing. And if I remember correctly, it's 26, I believe, or 28? 26. Yeah, we can count it, yeah. And then, here, there is 13 cars. Here's 13 cars. And because we blocked this, so here, 20, 25, because they're putting a little bit, I mean, this car's a little bit tilted here, so we block this. And car here, and then two cars here. And another, maybe eight or nine cars here.
We're gonna have to.
It's, I want to make sure, that's my, usually when I, I mean, that's, I want to make my lot looks nice.
It's in our best interest to make it look good, too.
The car like, the other dealerships, like, you know, pack the car, you cannot get in, in or out from the car, stuff like this. So our best interest is to do, I mean, to make our lot looks nice.
By the time you get to the trustees and the committee of the whole, this information will be.
Yeah, we can.
In your presentation.
Sure.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I can, yeah, the architect can, the architect can do.
Well, I generally support the concept. I, I think that certainly, I don't want to see that corner abandoned. And, and I have noticed a lot of work. I'm a business owner right in your area also, and I've noticed a lot of work and cleanup in that area, and it looks good. Certainly, you can see from my position, it's very difficult to make judgment on some of this, when the facts and figures, I mean, when you gave some of the numbers that you just gave, those are quite different than when you count the spots. And remember, I didn't submit this drawing, you did. So I, I think it's in your best interest to make sure the drawings are as up to date and correct as possible, because this, I'm not sure accurately reflects what you're planning to do, or what our codes are. But by and large, I certainly support the concept. And, and I think that your agreement with most of the principles is a good step. The sign reduction is a good one, particularly in light of the last applicant. And I.
You would have liked to be grandfathered in, but with the three signs, because the previous owner did have three signs, but I understood that, that signage is not grand, being, it's not capable of being grandfathered in, so.
Correct. And the last thing, I would just like to welcome you to Westmont and to the neighborhood, and I hope you have a successful business, and you're hiring another 25 employees when we see you here for your expansion.
We're working, you know, to buy two new businesses. Probably in two or three weeks, we're gonna be done.
Okay, excellent, excellent. We keep moving on. Commissioner Pedesco, please.
Okay, I think the concept is good. I'm pretty good at looking at drawings and plotting out things. Basically, I come up with about 84 spots that you can use for.
On the main lot.
I'm talking of the entire property, based on what you described, four storage of vehicles, five employee spots, keeping your other spots for your, your customers. And, and that is parking on both sides of that, on the east side of the building, because if it is a one-way, I'm looking at the, the width of that drive, excluding the cars, if you get the cars right up against the building, and right up against the, the east property line, the fence, you probably have somewhere around 14 feet of driveway there. You can easily drive a car at 14 feet, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's, that's giving you enough for parking on both sides, based on the dimensions at one and 20. So realistically, you could probably get somewhere around 85, 84, 85 cars. You're not gonna get 100 and some odd cars.
Well, my only question to you then is, because you're obviously more, like visually.
Yeah, I'm a visual person.
Gifted than I am. But is that based on the current width of the stalls as shown on here? Because I believe that the architect did, did make them wider here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the stalls that are currently there, counting them, and, and adding stalls in the back of the building.
So then the only, yeah.
And adding stalls along the side of the building. And, and if you're gonna make these smaller, then.
Well, yeah, that would be the only reason that our figure would be more than yours, is if the architect said that, that the stalls, as drawn on here, are, are wide.
Are, are wide. Well, if that's the case, then I can see maybe another dozen.
Yeah.
Maybe even 20 more cars. Maybe you'll get close to 100. We're not gonna get 150 cars on there. I don't see where that's physically possible. But then again, you know, draw it out, present it to the staff, and, you know, pass this board, and then the decision will be made. But you definitely need to have a drawing with all of that depicted. And I would show that drive being closed off, and obviously, you're gonna match what's there, you know, the type of landscaping, or whatever is there right now. And it, it should work.
Okay. Did the, and then, were there any landscaping comments, or should I just communicate with the staff about that?
I think you should communicate with staff, because the landscaping is, you know, their decision as far as, I mean, it really does need some landscaping, but they know what the rules are. That's my comments.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I think we could talk all night about parking and, and the number of spaces are, until you get it, something tangible down, and confronting with the architect, and then sitting with our, our staff people, that can be worked out. I have a question only because you, you brought it up. AutoNation, you own the building, AutoNation, which is housing Mercedes?
We own the land and the building, and then AutoNation is the tenant.
651, yeah, 651.
Blackhawk, yeah.
No.
The old wine cellar.
Ogden, it's behind BMW.
It's not on Ogden, it's on, it's on Blackhawk Drive. It's on Blackhawk.
It's behind BMW.
It's on Westmont Drive.
Westmont Drive, yeah.
Westmont Drive, yeah.
Okay, that's just.
Are there any, like, violations that we should be aware?
No, that's another, we've got enough going here. No, I, I trust that you'll work it out in, in a timely fashion, and, and I wish you the best in success in your business. I'm assuming that even though you're a Willowbrook corporation, that the sales tax revenue will flow to Westmont?
Point of sale, it's Westmont.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Point of sale.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, the business we're gonna buy, it's a losing business now, by now. We're gonna convert it to a.
That's all I have.
Money-making business.
Okay. All right, I have, I agree with my other commissioners. I, I think it's a good concept. Obviously, you guys can sell cars. And that's what you're in front of us for, is a special use permit. I welcome you back to Westmont, and I wish you good luck. So with the special use, we have findings of fact. Mr. Kimball?
Criteria number one, the proposed use at this location will not have any adverse effects above and beyond those inherently associated with such a special use, irrespective of its location within the zoning district. This proposed used automobile dealership is consistent with surrounding automobile dealership uses along Ogden Avenue and the general vicinity of this property. This dealership will not maintain normal automobile dealership hours of operation, and its business operations will not cause any substantial adverse impacts, excuse me, I'm sorry. This dealership will maintain normal automobile dealership hours of operation, and its business operations will not cause any substantial adverse impacts to surrounding property owners as a result of noise, light, odors, vibrations, location of operations, or hours of operations. Surrounding property owners and the public will be further protected from any adverse impacts from this automobile dealership if special conditions are imposed on this operation, consistent with special conditions imposed on other auto dealerships within the village.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Ananmas?
Criteria number two, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number two. This used automobile dealership is not expected to cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. The existing parking lot and building have been utilized as an auto dealership over the past years without incident. The village is controlling the number of vehicles which may be parked upon the property to prevent overcrowding and any hazard to pedestrian safety. Proper lanes of traffic will be maintained by the applicant. The loading and unloading of vehicle inventory will take place on the property, and not on any public streets.
If you agree, please raise your hand. Agreement?
Criteria number three, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number four. Although the property is located within 500 feet of a residential district, the village previously granted a variance to this property to allow for this encroachment, and this. Although the property is located within five hundred feet of a residential district, the village previously granted a variance to this property to allow for this encroachment, and this variance runs with the land and is applicable to this proposed development.
If you agree, raise your hand.
Criteria number four, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number seven. All vehicles awaiting customer pickup will be stored in the back parking lot behind the building and shielded from public view. The applicant will not offer vehicle service at this location.
If you agree, please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement? Okay. I entertain a motion for PZ ten zero nine for the Alpha Motors of Westmont for the special use permit request to allow the sale of used automobiles.
So moved with the stipulations that the staff has put together.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill and second by Commissioner Fadesco. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes. Okay. Get your drawings together, and good luck in front of the board.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you to the next.
And this way, we're going to do the grand opening next Saturday. Joakim Noah will be our guest for two hours.
Joakim.
I don't know. He's a good guy, that's what you told me.
Coffee and cookies?
And hot dogs.
No, it's a, it's a pork chop.
Oh, okay.
All right.
It's Saturday?
Yeah, seventy, starting five at one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, planning zoning ten zero two zero. Jeff Nygaard of CJI Incorporated and Westmont Imports Incorporated Mercedes-Benz regarding the property located at two hundred East Ogden Avenue for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a parking lot to encroach into the required five-yard setback. B, the land development code variant, variance request to permit the construction of a lot within the required side and rear yard easements. And C, the site lighting, site landscaping plan for approval for the automobile dealership addition. Gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Tom McCabe, and we're here tonight to, we represent Westport Imports. Been here a few times before, you with BMW and with Audi. Both those projects are progressing along. I just want to say, we usually don't enjoy being last, but we've got some good ideas now to take back to our clients.
So how many signs do you want?
And we do offer free vacuuming if you bring your car.
You're done, you're done.
Somebody mentioned they don't do big trucks.
Yeah, can't fit them in there.
I can't, I can't go.
What we're here tonight, over at Mercedes, we're going to be adding an additional, an addition onto the west side of the building. And it's going to be for showroom cars. And at the same time, like we did at Audi and at BMW, we've got the KDA lot next door, and we've had some piecemeal parking in the past. Now that we've got all the lots, a lot of this is just housekeeping. We're taking, with this addition, we're taking the opportunity. There's, the lot in the back now is gravel. We're going to be paving that. The lots up in the front, where the old KDA building was, and the parking lot in the back, right now, they're, they're, they're not parallel to each other. The KDA lot's on a, on a skew. So what we're doing, again, at this time, is we're taking the opportunity basically to, to take the, put the two lots together, the shaded areas where we're, we're going to be paving. So, we're going to take the two lots together, reorient them, and then make it more efficient for us. Put some islands in, put some landscaping in, and make it look like a one uniform piece of property. So, I think the other, and then I think you've seen that, but that's what the new building is going to look like. Where the sign is over the top, that's where the new addition is going to be. And then, we get a facelift on the rest, similar to the, to the other two where we're updating corporate. So, and I think with, with the variances, again, the, the parking lots are there. We're, we're not encroaching over, we're just taking what's there, what fits in there now, and paving it, updating them, adding curb where we need curb, adding islands where we need islands, and plantings and, and things like that. So.
It's only six inches, is that correct? The encroachment into the setbacks? And the only risk is that there is, what, a utility and drain easement there? So if work is done where they need all, what is it, ten feet?
We're at eighteen, yeah, we're at eighteen foot on our parking stalls, and I know, and one of the comments came back with sixteen. So if we went to seventeen and a half, we could get it, we could move them in. And where they're at, just, it's, it's where they're at today. That's how we got the, the half foot. I'm sure when they were built originally, they were a half foot, foot over the line, similar to the back of Audi when there was four, the building's four and a half feet instead of five. It's the same, same situation here.
Okay. Staff? No?
Janet, any comments?
I don't have any comments unless there are specific questions.
They're a horrible group, aren't they?
I'm sorry, my lack of questions. I hope it's not disturbing.
Okay, with that, I guess we'll, is anybody else would speak on this? Another cohort back there? Okay, well, close public comment, and let's go to Commissioner Thomas.
I have no question.
Oh, boy. Commissioner Pill?
I have no questions. I wish you luck.
Thank you.
To get him to say nothing is amazing.
They're worn out.
It hurts me to say that, too.
Commissioner Fadesco, please.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I like the idea of you guys taking the parking lots and making them look uniform, because I've been by there, and you look at that and you go, huh?
It's a maze right now, trying to get in through them.
That's why I say, you scratch your head and say, what's going on here? But I know the history of it, so it's kind of like, it makes sense, it's a good idea. And I really think the dealership is going to look great, so, good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren, please.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Another hard one. Okay, I must go along with that. Good luck with that, guys, and hopefully, business will keep booming, like that. Okay, so we have variance. Mr. Kimball, could you redefine as a fact on, A, the zoning code variance request?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Available space for the applicant's growing business is limited at this site. The applicant is proposing to construct a new paved parking area which will encroach approximately six inches into the required side yard setback. The applicant could not expand its business and yield a reasonable return without this minimal variance.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. This proposed expansion is required by Mercedes-Benz corporate image standards, and the variance is necessitated by the size of the property and the current improvements thereon.
Agree with this, please raise your hand, or unanimous?
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Granting this proposed variance will have no negative aesthetic impact on surrounding properties or the public, and will not impede the flow of stormwater.
If you agree, please raise your hand, unanimous again? Okay. I would entertain a motion to, for the zoning, see, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a parking lot to encroach within the required five-yard setback.
Shall move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Fadesco. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes. Okay. And B then?
Thank you.
Okay. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Available space for the applicant's growing business is limited at this site. The applicant is proposing to construct a new paved parking area which will encroach approximately minimally, no, which will minimally encroach into the required side and rear yard easements.
That wasn't you.
The applicant could not expand its business and yield a reasonable return without this minimal variance.
If you agree, please raise your hand. Unanimous in decision?
Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. This proposed expansion is required by Mercedes-Benz corporate image standards, and the variance is necessitated by the size of the property and the current improvements thereon.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Granting this proposed variance will have no negative aesthetic impact on surrounding properties or the public, and will not impede the flow of stormwater or reasonable access to utilities.
If you agree, please raise your hand, unanimous? Okay, entertain a motion for the land development code variance request to permit the construction of a parking lot within the required side yard and rear yard easements.
Shall move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Pill. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes. Okay. Okay. I entertain a motion for the approval of the site and landscaping plan for the automobile dealership addition.
Shall move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Fadesco. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Acting Chairman Anton?
Yes. Okay, you have a recommendation. Good luck, you guys.
Thank you.
See you soon. Okay, any other business? Any old business? Anything? Staff?
I'm going to miss the August meeting. I'll be out of town. Amory Perez from my office will be attending. So, lucky you guys.
I miss you already.
Okay, all in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.